All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Uh, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. And United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Their God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
That was better. Uh, roll call, please, Diane.
Ken Anderson.
Here.
Sue Filic.
Here.
Bill Graberek.
Here.
Chris Mondy.
Here.
Pat Schuberg.
Here.
Matt Wilson.
Here.
Jeff Walter.
Here.
And village president, you're going to indicate that we're having this meeting remotely. Based upon your determination and in-person meeting is not practical or prudent at this time.
Uh, based upon my determination, we're holding this meeting remotely because meeting in person is not practical or prudent at this time. That, that good? I'd make a heck of a parrot, wouldn't I? All right, uh, I'd like to have a motion to open the public hearing for the 2020 Village of Elburn property tax levy.
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Graberek, second.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Filic, roll call vote, please.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Filic.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Aye.
Chris Mondy.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries, the hearing is open. John, do we have any public comment for the hearing?
I am double checking to see if we get anything in, and no, we did not get any public comments in for this public hearing or for the village board meeting.
Mr. Finance Director, do you have anything to add to the public hearing?
I do, I've got a short presentation. Well. Oh, the host has disabled me from sharing my screen, so.
Well, give me a few moments.
You'll have to either enable me or you'll have to.
Give her to try now, Doug.
That looks better. Okay, can you all see the screen there?
Yes.
Yeah, the truth, truth and taxation hearing. So we're, we're now holding the truth, what's called the truth and taxation hearing. Uh, it's being held remotely due to COVID restrictions. And this is for, uh, it's a taxation hearing for the 2020 tax levy. For the property taxes that will be payable in 2021. The notice of the hearing has been duly published at, in those two locations that is listed there. All right, there are six steps, the, the property tax cycle is a two-year cycle. Tonight, we're at one of those steps, and that's the green circle down here at the bottom, so we're at the tax levy. Step of this process. And so, for the steps, taxing districts, schools, counties, municipalities, townships. Determine the amount of revenues that they're going to need to raise from property taxes. Uh, the truth and taxation hearing is held if the current year's levy is more than a hundred and five percent of the previous year's extension. And if that's the case, we, we publish a black box notice. And the black box notice was published in the Elburn Herald. And on the website. So then following the hearing, then the village board will approve the tax levy and it, sometimes it's at the same meeting, sometimes it's at a later meeting. Tonight, it'll be at the same meeting. And then once the tax levy is approved, it's certified and filed with the county clerk. So those, that's kind of the high-level process of how it works.
Hang, hang on one second, Doug, as we're seeing John's screen.
You're still seeing mine?
Yep.
Cause I was, I was looking for Doug's. And I don't see it, so let me get back to this again, I apologize. Uh, sure. Stop the share, let me do that.
There we go. Now we can see it's Doug's screen.
Okay, you should see an, an exploded pie chart there.
Yep, that's what we got.
All right, so. In the general fund, our revenues are going to be a little, just a little more than three million dollars in the current fiscal year. And, and we're in current fiscal year 2021, it's called. And so, of all the revenues that you see here. The three big ones are sales tax, property tax, income tax. Tonight, we're talking about property tax. Property tax comprises approximately twenty-two percent of our revenues in our general fund. And so, on your total property tax bill, where does that money go? Well, the, the, the largest portion of it goes to the Cane Land School System. And. Part goes to the county, part goes to the forest preserve, part goes to the township, depending on which township you live in. This example shows BlackBerry Township. And it goes several places. This little wedge of the pie is, is the Village of Elburn's portion of the property tax. And that comprises about five percent of your property tax bill. So the property tax rate is based on the EAV, equalized assessed value. This chart shows you what the village's assessed value has been doing. Two thousand eight was the high point. And then after two thousand eight, we, we had the recession of two thousand eight and nine, but that was not reflected in property taxes. Until a few years later, that kind of bottomed out in thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and then it's been going back up since then. So that's, that's a good thing. And as far as. The EAV for new property, that kind of followed the, the same pattern. Not exactly in the same years for the same increases. But that's been going back up, except this year, it, it took quite a tumble in 2020 from what it was in 2018 and 2019. Uh, so. The property taxes for the village are split among a few different categories. The corporate part, part of that is by far the largest part. Part goes to IMRA, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. Part goes to pay for the audit. Part goes to liability insurance and part pays the social security. Uh, expense of the village. So the total amount levied is one million five hundred dollars. This is the same as what it has been now for the last several years. There's been no increase in the levy for, for the last several years, and I've got another chart that will show you that. Uh, which is this chart. So the blue, the blue shows the amount of the levy. The red shows the amount of the extension. So you say, well Doug, what's the difference between those two? The levy is, is what we ask for, the extension is what we get. Cause we don't, we don't get as, as much as what we asked for. So, uh, the, the levy, you can see, has been the same now for, for four years. And the extension grows a little bit every year. Before that, the levy was the same at eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars for several years. For a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. The village portion of that home's property tax. This shows a little history, uh, because our rates differ a little bit from year to year. So in this next year, the 2020 tax payable in 2021 would amount to two hundred dollars in taxes for the village portion. In the next tax year. Now that would, is up about two dollars from what it would have been last year. And, uh, you can see the comparisons here, year to year, what, uh, what the tax would have been. On a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. And so. I was anticipating a whole room full of people or a whole, uh, bunch of people logged on to learn how their property tax is used. Uh, so, all of you know all of this already, but. Your property tax is used to, for employee salaries and benefits, property and liability insurance, general office expenses. For police, it's used for dispatching and training and pension and vehicle maintenance and fuel. For streets, it's used for, for street sidewalk and streetlight maintenance and snow plowing. For building and zoning, it's used for building permit administration and inspections. And then for administration, it funds the village administrators' office and the finance department. And that is the explanation of the tax levy. And now is the time for questions, if the public has any questions, and John indicated that there were no questions that.
There was none that were submitted, although we do have a member of the public, Mr. Skidmore is with us.
Okay.
I don't know if he has anything to add.
Okay, doesn't sound like it.
Like to ask Mr. Skidmore, why our EAV went down?
So, I, that, that concludes what I wanted to present as part of the hearing. And if there are no questions, I think we can conclude the hearing.
All right, I have a motion then to close the truth and taxation public hearing for the 2020 Village of Elburn property tax levy. I'm sorry, who was that?
Trustee Wilson, I'll move.
Trustee Wilson.
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Schuber, uh, roll call vote, please.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Filic.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Hi.
Chris Mondy.
Hi.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries, public hearing is closed. Uh, we have no public comment this evening unless anything came in in the last two minutes. We have no awards or presentations. I need a motion then to approve the omnibus agenda, which for tonight includes the village board minutes of November sixteenth and the committee of the whole minutes of November sixteenth.
Anderson moves it.
Moved by Anderson, second.
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Schuber, roll call vote, please.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Filic.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Hi.
Chris Mondy.
Hi.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, moving on to mayor, I've got a couple of things tonight, uh, you will have noticed in the minutes from the last meeting that we were going to have a Sugar Grove. Uh, boundary agreement discussion in the cow tonight, but due to the amount of material in tonight's board meeting. The cow was canceled for tonight, so we'll take that discussion up on the twenty-first. I understand that trustee Anderson will not be here on the twenty-first, is there anyone else who will be out that week for the holidays? Everybody else will be here, so we should have a.
Yeah, I'll be here, no problem.
I'll be here.
Alrighty. All right, so we will have that discussion then at the cow on the twenty-first. Uh, I want to send out a public thank you to trustee Anderson, park commissioner, uh, Brian McCarty. And to Phil and his crew for getting out all the new pads and the new benches, uh, for all the new trash cans and new benches all around town. Uh, noticed them as we've walked around and driven around, looking forward to seeing all that work finished. Uh, it's, it's a really nice deal around some of the walking areas and the ponds in town, you can now sit down and relax and kind of look out over the water. It's a really good thing that our park commission has been, uh, pushing, I know we've had some donations for it. So that, that's just a, a great program, and thanks to you guys, uh, for getting that work done. Um, also, a little shameless plug for EEI and the American Legion, uh, who are doing Toys for Tots collection around town. There's a box at Village Hall, there's a box at the Legion, I think there's a box at. Uh, the Lions Club, maybe? John, where do you guys have your two boxes? I know there's two boxes somewhere.
Uh, the only one I knew about was at, uh, was at the Legion office.
Okay, and then, um. Um, Cheryl at Rise and Dine is collecting for the veterans home that had the big outbreak, uh, down in La Salle of, uh, of COVID. Uh, was it twenty-eight deaths or something, it was pretty horrid. Um, there, she's taking up a collection for that as well as.
The Legion is too.
Yeah, and, and Legion, all right, so if you're interested in that, I think Cheryl also has a Toys for Tots box there in her, in her restaurant, so. Uh, the only other thing I have, um, is go Navy, beat Army for this weekend, and I'll move on to the village attorney.
Wanted to bring to your attention that there was a recent, uh, binding opinion issued by the public access counselor, the attorney general's office. Uh, they have been, uh, very quiet during 2020 in issuing any sorts of opinions as to FOIA or Open Meetings Act and actions complaints. Uh, Open Meetings Act complaints. Um. So this binding opinion, uh, opinion was issued November twenty-fourth. Um, with the Village of Roanoke, which, uh, I, Wikipedia, it's in the Peoria area, has about two thousand residents. Uh, and they had a remote meeting on September eighth of two thousand and twenty that resulted in one individual submitting a complaint. To the attorney general's office alleging two violations of the, uh, Open Meetings Act. The, uh, two alleged violations had to do with, number one, he was still mad that he couldn't be in person in the, at the village board meeting, because they were holding it remotely. And the second complaint was that during the remote village board meeting, they muted the Zoom presentation for approximately sixty seconds. And he raised that as an issue of the violation of the Open Meetings Act. So this opinion. Uh, analyzes those two complaints. Uh, the opinion quickly did away with the complaint that he couldn't be in person to, uh, to attend the meeting because. As soon as the governor has issued the emergency proclamation of disaster back in March, and as soon as you have a. Uh, a declaration from the public head of that body or your village president that says it's not prudent or impractical to meet in person. That satisfies the whole in, in-person thing. And, uh, the public access counselor said, I hear your, your complaint, but it's still not appropriate to have in-person meetings, so that, that complaint went nowhere. As to the issue of having, um, the Zoom meeting muted for sixty, for sixty seconds. Um, so they asked the village, and they said, oh, what happened? Uh, and they basically came back and said, during the meeting, the village president turned to, uh, the village clerk. And asked to mute the mics. And during, when the, when the mics are muted, asked a question about whether a certain topic needed to be addressed in open session. Or in closed session, so it was a personnel issue. But they acknowledged this, yep, we, we turned the mics off of Zoom for sixty seconds, and then we came right back in. They did actually then go into closed session at the end of the meeting to discuss the personnel issue, but they kind of said that's exactly what they did. And they indicated that they thought that still that was not a violation, uh, of the Open Meetings Act, because if they were in person. It's not unusual for somebody to move over to your left to talk somebody, or move to your right to talk to somebody, or try to talk to somebody. Outside the, the, uh, I guess the hearing of the general public. Uh, and they referred to it as a sidebar, and they said, hey, sidebars aren't a violation of, of the Open Meetings Act, and sidebars are okay. Well, not according to the public access council. Um, through a very rigid reading of the Open Meetings Act, it indicates that. Um, any alternate arrangement such as a remote meeting has to be arranged in such a manner to allow any interested member of the public. Access to contemporaneously hear all discussion, testimony, and roll call votes. Uh, so they first threw the exact language of the Open Meetings Act back at the village and said, it's all. It's not except for sidebars or except for anything else. And then they've indicated further, um, the dichotomy that if it was in person, they'd allow a sidebar. And they'd allow the, the, uh, the public not to hear everything. But that language is not in the most recent amendment when it talks to remote hearings or remote meetings. So, um. And, and so they found that the Village of Roanoke did in fact violate the Open Meetings Act by having that sixty-second unmuted sidebar. Their remedy was to make the, uh, publicly, make publicly available the complete verbatim record of the open session of that meeting, so. Uh, in hindsight, it's a hand slap, but the analysis is, as we're all get, as we're all using this format for these meetings for who knows how long. Um. Not every statute act was, was ever created for all the intricacies of this technology. So the lesson that would comes out of this public access counselor's binding opinion is. This is an open meeting, all, all four corners of it. And unless we're going into a closed session for a, for a proper exemption to the OMA. As soon as we, you know, um, call or order the meeting, and until it's adjourned, it's an open meeting. And so what we say needs to be projected to the general public. So, uh, another example as we learn to deal with and, uh, deal with and get our business done, uh, in 2020 and beyond. So that's all I have under.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Bill on that or anything else? Then we'll move on to village clerk, Diane.
Just a real quick update, um, we did have the consolidated primary filing recently, and I did receive one petition. And we are coming up next week for the consolidated election filings. The notices on the village website on the front door of Village Hall and will be in the Thursday Kane County Chronicle. And filing dates begin on Monday, December fourteenth at seven AM. Wednesday, December sixteenth, from noon to one. Saturday, December nineteenth, from nine to ten AM, and Monday, December twenty-first, from four to five PM. And we are doing it a little bit differently this year due to COVID. Uh, we are putting a drop box in the outer vestibule for petitioners to drop their ballot or their petitions. And I will be in the inner vestibule to answer any questions, in case there are any. And receipts will be sent via email instead of in-person. And all of those instructions are in the press release as well.
And since we didn't have four candidates for any one position and apply for the primary, and we won't have a primary, everything will go straight to the.
Correct. That one petition will automatically be on the consolidated election. Uh, listing.
Okay. Any questions for Diane?
No.
All right, we'll move on to village engineer, Julie. You're on mute, Julie.
Just two, uh, quick things, just one minor correction, the, the Toys for Tots box is not an EEI collection box, it's the, um, Fox Valley Branch American Public Works Association. Uh, box, just wanted to make that distinction. Um, the other thing was just the Anderson Kesslinger, that, um, that intersection's going to open up to, uh, the south leg of that intersection's going to open up on December fifteenth. Somewhere between nine AM and noon, uh, it will be on temporary signals. The permanent traffic signal equipment won't arrive until end of January.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Any questions for Julie? All right, and John, we're not doing any kind of ribbon cutting or anything for that stretch, right?
Unless you'd like to.
Board? Anybody on the board interested in coming out on the fifteenth to cut a ribbon? We did it for Anderson Road when it opened at the, uh, far north end when that piece was complete, but, uh. Happy to do it if anybody wants to join me out there. I'm not getting any real excitement from the crowd here.
It's cold out, doing a ribbon cutting.
Keep playing in the intersection, doesn't sound good.
Just me and you, Jeff.
Yeah, we'll just run through traffic for a while and see what happens.
Right.
All right, uh, moving on to the village administrator.
All right, well, uh, a big thank you to Diane for putting together the, uh, the calendar for the meeting agenda calendar for next year. Um, something we have to do every December is publish a, uh, calendar of meetings for all of our public meetings for, uh, for the coming year. And, um, before you, you have, um, exactly that, all of our meetings, uh, all the times, uh, the dates, they have been adjusted for holidays. Uh, so I would ask for the board's approval on next year's calendar.
Do I have a motion then to approve the 2021 meeting calendar?
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Graberek, second.
Anderson, second.
Second by trustee Anderson, roll call vote, please.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Filic.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Hi.
Chris Mondy.
Hi.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, um, going on to the next item, uh, ordinance twenty twenty dash thirty-seven, amending the sign code. Uh, the only thing that was in there that, uh, needed to be changed from what was presented last time around was the downtown, uh, sign ordinance. Boundary, uh, you'll see on the, the first two pages, uh, the portion of the existing boundary that was in question. And then if you flip that over, is the proposed. Uh, boundary, keeping all of the property along First Street that was in the boundary. Uh, keep that in, and then all the property to the east, uh, will be deleted.
That's fine.
All right, then, do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash thirty-seven, amending the sign code?
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Schuber, second.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Filic, any discussion on amending the. Sign code ordinance?
Yeah, I have only one comment on page twenty-three in the sign code. We need to, um, there's an illustration we need to update.
Right, that will be updated, I wanted to make sure that the boundary was approved, and then I will get with EEI to have a new boundary in, uh, put into the ordinance.
Great.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Filic.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Hi.
Chris Mondy.
Hi.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Um, ordinance twenty twenty dash thirty-nine, the met, amending section eight oh four dot zero four, paragraph eleven, endorsements of outdoor retail sales. Um, currently, this is on, I believe, page six. Paragraph B, uh, you'll see that it's redlined. The, uh, the brew pubs were not included in that, and, uh, it was something that has come up, uh, requested. And so it is before you to add, um, the outdoor, uh, alcoholic beverage sales to, or to add the class G license to the outdoor retail sales.
All right, do I have a motion then to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash thirty-nine, amending section eight oh four dot oh four eleven, endorsements of outdoor retail sales?
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Filic, second.
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Schuber. Second by trustee Schuberg, any discussion on this change to the liquor ordinance? There's no discussion. We'll have a roll call vote please.
Ken Anderson.
Aye.
Sue Filek.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Aye.
Chris Mondy.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And moving on, we have a request from the county of Kane. They have received a request for rezoning for the uh, Anderson Animal Shelter. Uh, they plan on moving from Elgin to a location on Route thirty eight just west of Harley and just east of the uh, Spring Hill Nursery. And uh, their uh, their request is included in your packet. Uh, so they intend on uh, developing a portion of the farm field that is there. Uh, but it will be all used for uh, for their animal shelter purposes. So they are also expanding out of cats and dogs and turtles and whatnot, and they will be including larger animals in their expanded space. And so the county has asked us uh, for the village board's opinion.
I think I've talked about this at a previous board meeting and passed the, the pamphlet around and what this facility will look like. They finally got the land and are moving forward with fundraising and then now obviously zoning. Uh, so they're going to have horses, they're going to do small animals like, you know, rabbits and whatever other sugar gliders and hamsters and all that stuff, dogs, cats, birds, they're going to have an aviary. I think everybody got a chance to look at that. So any comments or questions or anybody not thinking this is a good thing out there on thirty eight?
Actually, uh, back in the beginning of the year, the Fox Valley Wildlife Center merged with the animal, uh, Anderson Animal Shelter. So the rehab of, you know, the injured animals, et cetera, and the babies will also take place on that uh, facility when it's built.
All right, anybody have any objections that we want to note? If not, then John, we can send a letter to the county that uh, we are in favor of the zoning change. And we'll have some new neighbors to the east and hopefully some more business in town for people that will. I mean, the way they talked about it, they're going to have it open to the public all the time. So if you want to come out and walk around, there's going to be a dog park and you'll be able to see what's in the aviary and the other buildings. And uh, so it'll be a bit of an attraction for the Albern area. So maybe our uh, our in-town businesses will get some benefit out of that as well. So I think it's.
I think it's a really good transitional use. If you look at the ultimate Village of Hampton Hills came south of thirty eight on Harley Road there. So this would be a nice buffer between them and us if, if you look at that.
Yep. If they ever want to develop down there. All right, anything else, John?
Um, not at the moment.
Anybody have anything for our village administrator? If not, we'll move on to building and zoning. Tom?
Um, item twelve is discuss and approve ordinance twenty twenty dash thirty eight on a variance to the sign code, the downtown sign district for J and R Hera at two ten East North Street. You can see in your packet what they'd like to do. It's a backlit sign. Um, the uh, planning commission unanimously uh, voted to approve it to the village board to allow that uh, contingent on the fact that uh, the sign be turned off at ten P M.
All right then, do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash thirty eight, a variance to the sign code for J and R Hera at two ten East North Street?
Anderson moves.
By Anderson, second.
Second.
I heard a couple of seconds there, was that?
Go ahead.
Schuber, who?
I'll second it.
Second by Mondy then. Thank you. Uh, any discussion then on the sign ordinance variation?
Just a curiosity about these uh, internally lit signs they're supposed to. Is there any enforcement on this? And that's possible if we get more and more of these? You know, where, where if it's not turned off, it's uh, yeah, a warning or, you know, uh, something that would in, allow us to enforce violations of it. And again, you know, yeah, my, my issue, of course, we had this thing with the, with the bank. But those were replacements. But yeah, and otherwise we're going to have internally lit signs because this is a pretty big sign they're putting up. Uh, you know, the standing one as well as the wall sign. Just any thoughts on that for anybody, anybody?
You know, I tuned into the YouTube of the planning commission meeting and they talked about it at length and talked about the Napa sign across the street, the size of it. So I, I think that they probably brought up all the things that we would bring up and came to the conclusion that we allowed the Napa sign to be there and to be eliminated and turned off at ten P M. So that the same would be acceptable for J and R Hera sign. So I, I, I agree that they had a good discussions. I'm glad I tuned in. So I agree with what they have said.
But to the enforcement question, Tom, do we, do we check these after they're put up and make sure where they're turning them off and Nick or anybody?
Yeah, I can coordinate with the P D for, you know, the ten P M. Shut off. Um, we'll, we'll get back to you on that to see if there's any um, violations there, but uh, you know, the, the, the majority of the uh, planning commission was, you know, pro-business and, you know, just that, that, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to keep some of the C M. District out of the downtown sign ordinance. But uh, you know, we shouldn't have too many more of these coming before you guys for this because other than uh, Albern Radiator and J and R Hera from that point east, um, you guys voted to keep that out of the downtown sign district.
And Bill, I'm, I'm not, I don't have the entire sign ordinance in front of me, so I, I couldn't point to either where a uh, enforcement paragraph is or isn't. But since the ten o'clock is a condition of the variance, I think if we had evidence of violation of the variance, we would put in writing that they're either compliant or we would take steps to revoke the, the variance.
Okay.
So I think we would have some, again, without looking at the sign ordinance itself. Cause I don't know if it has a separate paragraph dealing with enforcement, but I would just think with the passage and the approval of the or, of the variance uh, with the restriction, they have to comply or it's, it's possibly uh, susceptible to being revoked.
Yeah, just so we got something, you know, so we can send them letters and, and, and you're right, we could, we could uh, terminate the variance if if, if it were an issue. And you don't want some sort of internally lit sign creep, you know, all over the place because then it becomes meaningless.
Agreed.
Anyway.
Yeah, I think the neighbors will have a more of a view of this sign than they do the Napa sign since it's really across the street from a couple of those houses. We'll hear from them if it's uh, on all night and shining in their windows.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, you know, the duplexes are over there and, and there's probably going to be another set over there too. So yeah. And, and you know, so often it's, it's not like a fast food place where you're, you, you need some sort of location identity where people are driving around looking for a fast food place. You know, for shops that are such as that services like this, they're, you know, people are driving around saying, God, you know, where can I find a heating, air conditioning guy today?
At two in the morning?
At two in the morning, yeah. Yeah.
I would say too, we have a intersection that has a light on it as well, street light. So there's lights on there all night.
That's true.
That's a good point. All right, any other discussion?
No.
Roll call vote please.
Ken Anderson.
Aye.
Sue Filek.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Aye.
Chris Mondy.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Tom, anything else?
That's it.
Anybody have anything for Tom? All right, moving back to Doug and my favorite time of the year because I get to do all these separately and.
Yeah, we need to, because they're ordinances, separate ordinances, we need to do them one by one. So the first one is the tax levy ordinance for the village proper. And we've talked about that several times. It's so it's a tax levy in the amount of one million five hundred dollars.
All right, do I have a, a motion then? I'm just going to go through these and we'll, do you need to talk between each one, Doug, or can we just roll through them?
You can roll through them.
All righty. I think that's what we did last year. A motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty six, the tax levy ordinance.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
By trustee Graberek, second by trustee Schuberg, roll call, or any discussion on the tax levy ordinance? Roll call vote please.
Ken Anderson.
Aye.
Sue Filek.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Aye.
Chris Mondy.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty seven, the S S A one tax levy.
I'll move it.
I'll move. I'll second it.
Schuberg, second by trustee Graberek. Roll call vote please.
Ken Anderson.
Aye.
Sue Filek.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Aye.
Chris Mondy.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a uh, motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty eight, S S A two tax levy?
I'll move it.
By trustee Filek, second.
I'll second it. Go for it, Bill.
Second by trustee Graberek. Any discussion on S S A two tax levy? Roll call vote please.
Ken Anderson.
Aye.
Sue Filek.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Aye.
Chris Mondy. Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty nine, S S A three tax levy?
I'll move it.
By trustee Schuberg, second.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Filek, any discussion on S S A three tax levy? Roll call vote please.
Ken Anderson.
Aye.
Sue Filek.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Aye.
Chris Mondy. Did I, did you say aye, Chris?
Aye. My internet's starting to act up, sorry.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash thirty, S S A four tax levy?
I'll move it.
Schuberg, second by trustee Graberek, is that who that was?
Yeah, that was, that was me.
All right, roll, any discussion on S S A four tax levy? Roll call vote please.
Ken Anderson.
Aye.
Sue Filek.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Aye.
Chris Mondy.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash thirty one, S S A five tax levy? Anyone?
I'll move it.
Move by trustee Schuberg, second.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Filek. Any discussion on S S A five tax levy? Roll call vote please.
Ken Anderson.
Aye.
Sue Filek.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Aye.
Chris Mondy.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash thirty two, S S A six tax levy?
I'll move it.
Move by trustee Schuberg, second. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Graberek. Any discussion on S S A six tax levy? Roll call vote please.
Ken Anderson.
Aye.
Sue Filek.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Aye.
Chris Mondy.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, Doug?
Nope, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody have anything for Doug? Uh, chief police department.
Get off mute here. Okay, um, just a couple of quick things for the board. Um, wanted to let everybody know, been talking about the uh, U S Department of Justice, uh, new requirement for certifications in regards to the use of force to stay compliant with federal funding. Uh, did want to let the board know, we received word on Friday that we passed our certification. Uh, we had to submit our policies and procedures to a representative from the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police from their law enforcement accreditation program who reviewed our current policies and procedures and did um, deem, as I suspected, uh, we met not only the two mandatory compliance measures, but also the ten discretionary compliance measures. Our policies and procedures are all in compliance with that. So they will be sending forward notification to the Department of Justice that we are in compliance and we will stay available and uh, able to receive federal grant funding. So that's a, a good word on that. Um, the other item, just to let Julie know as well, on that uh, fifteenth date for the opening of Anderson Road, if the contractors would like our assistance out there when they activate the new traffic signals and everything, just let us know and we'll have uh, officers out there to assist with temporary traffic control until they get those signals all activated and set up and the barricades cleared off for the opening. And I think other than that, uh, that's all I have for this evening.
All right, anybody have anything for the chief? Bill, Public Works?
All right, discuss and approve a purchase of a hoop building in the amount of ninety nine thousand three thirty four. Um, we had budgeted uh, hundred and ten for this hoop building for this year. Um, I think it's a, I think it's going to be good for the public works. It definitely will free up some space. Uh, as we've been growing, not only with equipment, but with uh, vehicles too. Um, we could use the space. So I think this ought to work out quite well. Um, the uh, Geneva, Geneva was in and did the asphalt. They did a great job. Looks very nice back there. But anyway, this is the quote, I got two, two quotes. Um, I looked at trying to get three, but um, that, that one, there was a company out of out east, they weren't real fast on getting back pricing. So we went with these two. Um, looking at both the Greenfield and the Pfeiffer Guardall, the Guardall is what we have right now. And I have nothing but pretty much good to say about a hoop building. It is built, this one is built very strong. I like the way it's built. Uh, one of the selling points was that when this was manufactured or when they were designed, they were designed to be put up and down uh, fifty times for the army. So um, anyway, that's kind of one of the reasons why I'm leaning towards this Pfeiffer guard, uh, guard all. And really the only difference in these buildings from what we've got already is uh, is we'll have a front on this one and a overhead door and a um, and a door to go in, like a thirty six inch door, man door to go in and out. So anyway, you can kind of see what the, where the quotes were and where we're estimating the cost of this building when we're done. So that's kind of where we're at.
All right then, do I have a motion to approve the purchase of a hoop building in the amount of ninety nine thousand three hundred thirty four dollars and forty three cents?
Anderson moves.
Move by trustee Anderson. Moved by trustee Anderson, second.
Wilson, second.
Who seconded, I'm sorry, Matt?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Second by trustee Wilson. Any discussion on the hoop building? Roll call vote please, son.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Philek.
Hi.
Bill Graberek.
Hi.
Chris Mondy.
Hi.
Pat Schuberg.
Hi.
Matt Wilson.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right. All right, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Go ahead.
Discuss and approve purchase of a service truck in the amount of seventy five thousand. Let me turn to the other page. See, here we go. Okay, um, back in March. It, we actually had put it in front first. And basically what the board kind of came up with is we've. And really moving forward, I think it's a good idea. We should be breaking up like the vehicles and equipment between sewer water and streets. So in a nutshell, originally this was going to be on last year's fiscal year, but. Between timing and the COVID, it's been pushed off till now. And this is basically what we've got for our service truck. It didn't really go up much. From a two thousand nineteen to a twenty twenty. It was only just, as you can see, it was roughly a hundred dollars. And one thing we are gonna do is we are gonna make sure it's silver. So it kind of matches our. What I believe John had started. I like that color of silver that we've got on a couple of our trucks already. So depending upon if the board wants to approve this, that's, that's the color of the vehicle that we're gonna be getting. So.
Well, I have a motion to approve the purchase of a service truck in the amount of seventy five thousand. This is seventy five even, but it's seventy five, six eighty.
It's a little bit over than what I had originally had figured.
And the amount of seventy five thousand six hundred and eighty five dollars.
Anderson moves.
By trustee Anderson, second.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Wilson. Any discussion on the new truck?
Was this aluminum or a steel bodied bed?
Uh, I think we're gonna go with the aluminum. My, my thought is on it, Bill, is theoretically, long as, you know, there's. The truck doesn't get in an accident, that, that bed should be good for at least two, two chassis. So. And what I mean by that is, you know, if the truck rusts out, that service body should be still in good shape.
Okay.
So it can be moved to another vehicle.
Any other questions?
Is it four wheel drive?
You betcha.
You putting a plow on it?
I'm not putting a plow on it. And I'll tell you the reason why. I don't really want a service truck that big with a plow. If, if it was to get slid into, whether it's the box or whatever. I had it kind of happen to my truck when I had a service body and. How do I put it? It's, it never was quite the same. So I don't care to put a plow on it. It's gonna be a, it's gonna be set up for repair and maintenance. I know, uh. I know it might be, you know, other, you know, some of you might have another idea, but I, I'd, I'd rather not, because eventually. Hopefully we'll have a crane, we'll have a crane on it in a compressor. And you just, vision wise, it'll be a little bit tough too. I think it, I just don't think it's a good idea. You don't see too many out there with plows on them. If it's just a regular service truck. Uh, let's say like, uh, like what we've got, I can't remember the number on the truck. I don't know if it was sixty four. Well, anyway, it's just a service body without a crane, without any of the other stuff. I don't see a problem with it. But this, this, this box will be pretty high with, with the equipment.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote please.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Philek.
Hi.
Bill Graberek.
Hi.
Chris Mondy.
Hi.
Pat Schuberg.
Hi.
Matt Wilson.
Hi.
Motion carries. Phil, you got a new building and a new truck tonight.
I just want to tell you, you know, I'd like to thank the board because on March sixteenth, that was my birthday and. I had to leave that place in tears. My gosh, I didn't get my new toy. But now I'm happy again.
Ready.
All right, now. So thank you, board. Mister President. All right, discuss and approve a professional service agreement with EEI for Tricelya Drive. Now this would be for design engineering. Okay, let me get to my PSA. Okay, attaches a PSA for design engineering with EEI for a total of fifty four thousand nine seventy eight. Which is just under ten percent of the construction cost. Now this is a design engineering. Originally, now, this is, this is kind of our thoughts on this Tricelya and getting it done. Now we're in our streets program and we're figuring we're gonna be over in Cambridge. Doing a mill and overlay and doing some, some gutter work, a little bit of sidewalk work. Our thoughts are, we could go out for bid on, on our twenty twenty program. I think we were gonna figure like mid-March. And then for Tricelya, what I'd like to do is, and they've got it down, EEI has it down for probably mid-April. And I think what, the reason I wanna, I don't want to say I'm pushing, but I think it's a good idea to do both these. We're in a very, we're not very far apart. We're gonna be getting the engineering and what have you done at a decent time so that when we go out to bid. Whether it's early March or, you know, mid, mid-March for just going out to bid, I think we're gonna be able to get some pretty good prices. I, I think we're gonna get good prices. One of the things you gotta keep in mind, originally we thought about using the Rebuild Illinois funds. I think it was three hundred and. Sixty thousand, I don't remember exactly, Doug, if you, I don't know if you've got the number there, but anyway. Originally, we were gonna use that on Tricelya, but after talking with staff and EEI. It made more sense to use that money on Anderson Road. The reason being is. We all know how expensive Anderson Rose is due to the phase one, phase two, phase three, not only the engineering, but building it. To the state specs. So with that being said, what they did do is they allowed us. If we so choose to is take that money, use it on Anderson Road. And then that way we can build Tricelya's. Cheaper, quite a bit cheaper. Because we won't have to go by the state guidelines. So that's kind of what, that's kind of what we're kind of thinking we ought to do. I think it's, it's a pretty good plan. That way we've got all paved streets other than Pooley Road.
All right, do I have a motion to approve a PSA with EEI for the Tricelya Drive project?
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Schuberg, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Mondy. Any discussion on this PSA? I think a lot of folks in that end of town will look forward to seeing that paved.
So was there, was there more to the service or agreement with EEI and it just wasn't included in the packet?
Yeah, there, there, I believe there was. It must have got, it probably got cut off for some reason. But there was more.
So in this, on this project, we're estimating it to be five hundred thousand dollars. Do we have the money budgeted for next year?
The money for the budgeting will come in next year, yeah. I mean, I'll have, we'll have to definitely look. Make sure we got the money. I think we do have the money. The key is with this one here is we do have, how do I put it? We've got funds that we did get from the state, which will take a big bite out of what the cost of that road will be.
And are we looking at cost sharing with, I'd say recapture with the adjacent property owners since. There is frontage that's on, on adjacent, that are gonna have benefits to those businesses or whatever.
Exactly. We're gonna, that's what I am gonna be looking into. See if we get some type of cost share.
I think that would be critical for this.
Yeah, that would be a concern of mine as well. I, I remember when the. People who, South Street Storage. When they were developing and we talked about, you know, the street improvement and. I believe it was like subdivision. Guidelines and what they're responsible for in completion of those roads. So to Ken, what, to what Ken brought up, I, I'm kind of concerned there too, because there's a great benefit to those property owners.
Can we, can we push this a month to, or. The next meeting to, to get some of those, how we're gonna make sure we get all those things done?
I, that's, it's.
You know what I mean? Legally, legally can we, legally can we do it? So to make sure that legally we can say. To the property owner to the east, because we own to the west, that you are gonna participate in the research or, you know. Reconstruction redesign of the project.
Well, I guess my question is, can we? I mean, it's, yes, they get benefit, but. It's a village.
Need an access onto it? Because if they need an access, we could say you don't get access in our, our right of way.
Well, they have.
They, they have access.
On the paved portion.
I, I seem to remember that when they came in to. With their business plan and proposal and they were coming in to develop their property, part of the discussion was. Their requirement for road improvements and gutters on that half of the road. And we talked about half of Tricelya's that they front, they would need to improve.
I remember that too, Pat. Because at that time, they voiced that they were told things would be taken care of and we kind of had. You know, let them know that's not how it was. I vividly remember that same thing, Pat.
Yeah, so if we need to go back to the minutes to review what we said or what they were agreed with. I think that's the other thing that I agree with Ken, that if we push this off a month, I'd like to review, I'd like for us to dig up that. That scenario when they were coming in and find out what was agreed to and what was promised. The other thing I wonder with Tricelya that we're developing this is, will it be engineered for the heavy truck traffic that it will endure?
Correct.
Yeah, we can design a payment section to whatever the daily traffic loads are.
When we were talking about the business units on South Street. And the lots that are for sale, the understanding was that the heavy trucks for any of those buildings. Would be going east or west on south to Tricelya's. So. Need to make sure that it is, you know, that it's not engineered for Cambridge Roads. Light, lighter weight, but that it, it, it is ready for the heavy truck traffic.
John, is there any property. Adjacent to Tricelya's that was recently annexed into the village or subject to an annexation agreement?
No.
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 In the village a long time.
But Pat is correct that there were plenty of discussions with, with the family that developed it. That those storage units and they were not going to expand any further north until Tricelya's was put in. And what we didn't have at the time was at what percentage. Would they be responsible for? And so that, you know, that, that will be. Those numbers, because you know, with the, without the engineering and knowing exactly where the road goes or how it's designed. We won't have a dollar amount to tell them that this is what they owe. And Ken Anderson is correct that if they refuse to do that, I believe that we do have. Some recourse. One is to deny them any access off of Tricelya's other than the one that they have right now, which was existing Tricelya's. And I believe that. I would have to double check, but I thought that that storage unit was a special use in that area. And we would have to go back and take a look at that ordinance as well.
As we are also considering Tricelya's and the Cam, and. They work on the roads in Cambridge, are we also planning on completing the small stretch of South Street as it comes to the curve? Where South and Tricelya's meet?
That's correct. We will extend the curb and gutter and the new pavement for where South Street ends right into Tricelya's.
Okay, though, that will be something that, and it'd really be interesting to look at what that percentage was. That we determined with South Street Storage.
Yeah, I want to say at that time, we were trying to get them for fifty percent. It was a really high number, if I remember right. And they balked at that. Because they didn't think there was that much benefit to them and then it all just kind of died. But John, can you pull those minutes out? See what we decided and, and, and I, you know, I guess. We need to get our standing. On what our authority is to do that. I mean, yeah, we can deny them access to the road if they don't contribute, but if they say no. They say no, you know. Can, do we have a legal leg to force contribution?
I'm sure the fire department would have something to say as well, trying to get a secondary access. To that property, that it would be beneficial for public safety.
That was gonna be my point as well, although I, I'm sure the, the fire department would. Probably mandate that under their own standards.
Right.
It would also be something we would like to consider too, because that, that is a pretty long stretch. To only have one access point, especially with all the, the buildings and if they continue to build farther north. If that were to be, you know, granted, building permits by the village, it's definitely something we, we need to. Consider before we make a final decision on that.
Right.
So I wonder if I need to table my motion for the next meeting?
Yeah, we would have to withdraw the second in the motion. And then we'll table it till the next meeting, till the research is complete.
I am happy to do so.
And, and Chris, you're good on the second?
Yes. I'll draw.
All right, so that motion then is, or this issue is tabled then until the twenty first? John, if you get the research done.
Yep.
You might have to do a little research in there as well. You know, I, I. Being pro-business, I don't want to hurt their business either, but I, I agree that they're gonna get benefits, so they should. But then again, so will everybody in Cambridge and everybody else in the, in the park back there will have the benefit. Of that road being paved. So I, I don't know what the right answer is, but we'll figure it out.
Well, and John, I would also say that, or Jeff, I would also say that it's not just the benefit of people who live in Cambridge. But when there are village events at Lyons Park or other places, it's an additional. Egress out of the subdivision that for traffic. So it provides a lot of benefits across Auburn, not just. The residents of Cambridge.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, there's, there's a lot of people benefiting from that road being paved other than that company at the corner there.
Right.
I, I do think that. If, once that road does get paved, whenever that is. There'll be a lot fewer, I don't know, maybe it'll work against us because that road gets pretty rough sometimes. It kind of keeps, might keep that Chevy dealer in business, so. I just look at it, getting it, getting it fixed. Eventually is kind of a good idea. I hate to see a gravel road in the middle of it, you know what I mean? In, in, in the village of Auburn. Makes it, makes it a little bit hard to plow. Make, you know what I mean? There's certain issues with it. Yeah, is there, is it a big dollar amount that you gotta, to keep, to maintain it? Not, not really. But then you always got the calls in the middle of summer when it's dusty and the wind's coming out of the west, that the people want you to go out and water the road. So, you know, there's, there's pros and cons of it all.
Right. Now, we just want to do what's, what's right and fair. All right, anything else, Phil?
Um, just a couple of things. John and I were pretty busy last week interviewing. We've got a few good candidates. Right now, we had to replace one person who, who left. And then we had in our budget for another laborer. And then what I'd like to do possibly on the next board meeting is possibly get the okay from the board to get a second laborer. So that would be two new hires. Of, I don't want to say two new hires, but two new positions. Possibly. But right now, we've got, we've got, what we feel, John and I feel, we got three pretty good candidates for whether we go with an operator or assistant operator at the plant. And then we've got a couple of, what I think is pretty decent labor position, you know, laborers coming in. If that's the route we go. So basically, we do have, we have it in our budget. That's what we started out with, is to have a, at least add one new position this year. I'd like to add two and go from there. But, so that's kind of what we're working on.
Okay. Anybody have anything for Phil? If not, Bill, the bills list.
Mayor, I reviewed the bills list for today. And after I caught my breath by looking at the bottom line, I found everything to be in order. The biggie, of course, is our EPA loan payment is due, which is a hundred and eighty four point some dollars. And we're looking at about a hundred and seventeen thousand in EEI. And of course, our insurance and our typical regular payments. Anyway, consequently, I would move to said, approve said bills list, an amount of five hundred and thirty eight thousand four hundred and sixty three dollars and thirteen cents, of which the bulk is in the EPA payment, which is pretty still.
Motion by trustee Graberik to have a second.
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Schuberg. Any discussion on the bills list?
The only thing that I would point out, Doug, if you'd chime in, I believe that that is the last payment for the IEPA loan for out at the wastewater treatment plant.
I didn't catch all of that, but the, the, the large payment to the EPA is the, is the loan that financed the improvements at the wastewater plant. It was a ten million dollar loan, almost a ten million dollar loan.
No, the, the, the other loan, this was from, I'm sorry, I thought the the payment was the, for that riverboat money.
No, no.
Okay, I'm sorry then.
That was last time.
I'm sorry. My mistake.
This, this one's for the EPA loan for the treatment plan improvements. And.
So yeah, we have a few more years left on that loan.
Several, but it's at a very low interest rate. It was ten million dollars at, I think, two percent, two and a half percent, something like that. So, so this, this is principal and interest. So and, and Bill said it was a hundred and eighty four thousand. It's, it's two hundred and eighty four thousand.
Did I say a hundred and eighty four? I, I, I misspoke. It's right. It's two hundred and eighty four.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion on the bills list? Roll call vote please.
Ken Anderson.
Aye.
Sue Philek.
Aye.
Bill Graberik.
Aye.
Chris Mondi.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Tomorrow, I will be picking up our COVID aid check from the county. So that will be in our finance department's hands tomorrow morning. Is there any other business to come before the board? If there's no other business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
Move by trustee Mondi, second. Do I have a second to adjourn?
I'll second it. Graberik seconds.
Second, trustee Graberik. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? All right. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thanks.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.